I understand.
It'll be very short. In six o'clock, I hereby call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman and Town Rancher VA Home to order. Sheriff, could you do a roll call?
I recognize a following present: Mr. Dorsett, Mrs. Garza, Mrs. Lutens, and Mr. Salinas. I recognize the following absent: Mr. Huffer and Dana Renfield, who are councilors present. And we do have a forum for the meeting.
Everybody stand. Ms. Lutens will lead us in the indication and then the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we come to you this evening with gratefulness to be living in this fine country. As we meet, we ask that you help us to remember as aldermen, we are given power not to advance our own purposes or those of a select few, but to serve and be accountable to all residents and property owners of Rancher VA Home. We ask your guidance to use our intellectual abilities to go forth and make sound recommendations and decisions. In closing, please bless our servicemen and women, some who are very far from home. Please also bless our nation's state and local governments, granting all an authority, the wisdom and grace to exercise their duties. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the residents forum, we have ordered the sound system for this room. And it came in in 20 different boxes. Some of it's back there, and some of it's in the office. But we have one box that's supposed to be in Thursday. So they won't be able to, in other words, they didn't get it installed at time for us to use tonight. Here, another thing I want to bring up is that on July the 19th, we're having a hurricane preparedness seminar here at Town Hall at six o'clock. Very important meeting. It's going to be done, we're going to have some of the officials that are involved in the county. The chief is going to make the presentation, Chief Cruz. And it's going to be on how and when we're going to evacuate. If evacuation comes up, how we're going to do it, what steps we've taken, what routes we've taken, what we're going to do to get people out. Those people that need medical attention, those people that need transportation, and then those people that are going to provide their own transportation and don't need medical, and how we're going to handle that. So everybody, tell your neighbors, tell somebody you're down. It's important that everyone knows. We've asked and talked to the mud, and they're going to have sand available. We're going to have 3,000 sandbags, and the sand, if we need it, we'll fill the bags. Even though the county may provide bags, they must fill. If you remember last, or not last year, the year before, whenever it was, they were six hours late getting the sand out here, and then they had about one tenth of the amount of sand that they were supposed to bring and so forth. So we're going to ask them to bring it, but we're going to not rely on that. We're going to have a couple loads of sand here and sandbags left to fill, so if we need them. The election that we had was audited, or an election inspector reviewed the election process that Rancher VA had during its alderman and mayor election. The report that they sent us is here at the office, available for anybody to look at, should they want to read it. As we have in every election, we've got excellent marks. 100% compliance. All right, number four on the agenda is residents forum. Does anyone here have something they would like to speak about, other than those ordinance that are on the agenda? Number... Yes, ma'am?
Jane Rosen, 1,000, Tassaro. I just wanted to thank the town and AEP for the light fixture, the streetlight that was put on Tassaro in the 1,000 block. It's just wonderful. And that's a pretty heavily traffic, you travel street, and it certainly does light up a large, I mean, it really spreads a lot of light, and I think it makes that area much safer for vehicular traffic, as well as pedestrians and bicyclers. So anyway, I'm thankful to have that. I know they're not cheap, and I'm really glad I got one on my street.
One of the benefits of having the electricity go out as often as it went out in the last couple years was that AEP donated five light bulbs. We get to select the areas.
I'm sure that, I don't know if that was an equal trade-off.
It may not have been, but it's better than nothing now.
You're helping me feel a little better.
Better than nothing now. Number five is the minutes, approval of the regular meeting of June the 12th, 2007. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, or changes required to the 2000, of June the 12th, 2007 minutes? If not, go here, motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
You second? All in favor? All right, we're going to open the public hearing to consider possible changes in ordinance 18, as amended. Ordinance 18 is the planning zoning ordinance. And we have a list of those that were, that have gone to planning and zoning. They listened to them and made their recommendation, and it was unanimous that all of these ordinances that were proposed be approved. So is there any comment on any of the ordinances that are going to be changed? Is there any discussion that needs to go on any of the ordinances that were proposed, that is being proposed that they're changed from the public?
Could you explain?
I'd be happy to. You want to explain it first, Mr. Bakken, before I add there? One of them is additional setbacks for structures that are over 20 feet. The structure height, when it exceeded 20 feet, for every, so many, so every two feet, we moved it back six inches in. We changed that height from 20 to 22 feet, because that was the normal height of a two-story building. And then we changed, it's now measured from the point that it goes over 22 feet, rather from the edge of the building. So if it's not a straight-up building, if it's slanted up like this, and it goes over 22 feet, 12 feet in, that has to have the additional setback of six inches for every foot. So it's not at the wall, the outside wall, it's at the point that the building goes over 22 feet. That has to be set back from that point on. We have, the majority of the Board of Appeals Adjustment Hearings that we have are on that type of structure, where they were going over 20 feet. After talking to the Building Committee, Mr. Bakken and Mr. Castle's end, planning zoning, they decided to do that. That's one of them. On the roof regulations, we changed it because we went to, it has to be a minimum of 30-year warranty on the roof. It used to be on the weight of the shingles, et cetera. That's no longer how they measure that, and we just updated that to be more current, requiring at least a 30-year warranty on roofs and shingles. Fence? The next one is fence and wall regulations. We've gotten people that have said from time to time that a structure that was made of wood was not a fence. It's a sight barrier, it's a landscape device, it's a privacy screen, et cetera. The Town Rancher VA doesn't want wood fences, no matter what they call them, here. So we changed that to include the wood or chailing fences, with sight barriers, with landscape device, with lattice screens, with privacy screens, or wood decorative screens, when permitted in law, regardless if it is inside or outside of the setback. So we tried to expand those things that people were using different terminology to get by with what was still a wooden structure. Another change on the fence and wall is that the measurement of six feet will be measured at where the fence is, not from the street. So the six-foot-high fence, which we have a limit of six feet, is going to be measured on both sides of where the fence is installed. So it can't be six feet above the ground where the fence is installed. Some of the fences could have been 14 feet tall, because they were measured from the midpoint of the road. If you've got slopes going down the risaka, it wouldn't work. There was a, in the ordinance, there was a section that said, "All new vegetation arranged as a sight barrier wall must conform with the fencing and wall requirements, except if its solid nature walls permit, and there are vegetation is arranged as a sight barrier wall, and maybe six, six feet and a half." That was changed to, no fence may see, that was just deleted. Period. That was just deleted. So if you went down to number 11, as an example, on the Diablo Golf Course, they looked at the backyards and the various people that lived there. They have vegetation growing around their corners of their backyard. That was illegal, based on the previous ordinance. If you go to the bend, they've got vegetation growing down their fences and so forth. And the new ordinance makes that legal. The question was, is what is new vegetation? Is it something that's planted the last six weeks, or is it something that's not a certain height, or it's not a certain thickness, or, you know, what is it? So anyway, that's been changed and taken down. So now people can have vegetation growing around their side yards and their backyard. Yes, sir?
But doesn't that allow them to have vegetation that will grow eight or even nine feet tall?
If they have some way of doing that, that's correct.
It'll happen.
Sure. A tree grows, a bush grows larger than that.
And shouldn't we continue to require them to keep it at six foot?
If you're asking my opinion, my opinion is no. Because, again, what is new vegetation? Is it a young tree? Is it a young bush? Is it a rose bush? What is it?
That can be defined.
A rose bush? I'm sorry?
That can be defined, a hedge, given several different names.
May I add something here?
Sure.
For instance, Mr. Bakken, I'm thinking of my fencing around my pool right now, which is about six feet high. I have vines growing on that for privacy around my pool. However, now it's flowering, and some of it goes up two feet above the fence. And I think people should be able to keep that, not just me, but I'd hate to have to chop it down to fence level, just...
Right. We're saying that you can have a fence and a wall, but only six foot high. But now we can have vegetation that grows to whatever. It's kind of, we're trying to keep this place open. That's one of the main reasons for some of these ordinances.
You know, I agree with that too, but let me tell you what I did. I walked down the streets to see how open it was, and the houses are too close together, it's not open. I can get in a golf cart and go down the fairways, if Mr. Trapp would let me, and then I can sit in the back. Or I could have a boat on the risaka and go in the back, but from the street, it's not open anyway.
Okay, but how about the neighbors? They can see your backyard and your front yard?
I guess my thought on that...
Be honest with you, I'm hoping not.
My thought on that is, it's, you have to weigh the openness of Rancher VA and the privacy that property owners might want. For instance, I may not want to look in my neighbor's backyard, and I would rather they not look in my backyard. So it's a delicate balance there that we're trying to achieve.
And I agree that vegetation is a lot nicer to look at than fences.
And it's also a lot nicer to look at in somebody's backyard, many places. But that's one of them that we're talking about.
Okay, I see you lost that one.
No, you haven't, yeah, we haven't voted. The fence, and the best example I can come up with on this is Ms. Bakken's property. We have, the fence can't be within 25 feet of a street. So the setback is 25 feet, and it can't encroach on the setback. So if you live on a corner lot, you have 25 feet from one street and 25 feet from the other street. So you have a Ms. Bakken fence going down the pool that's catty-cornered. So the ordinance that we're changing is to say that on the 9/11 address, it's 25 feet setback, just like it always has been. But on the side street, it's a five-foot setback, just like it is on your neighbor's house.
For a corner lot, yeah.
So then, you've got a case where we had up here, where you've got Convent, Escandone, and Santa Ana, they would have to lose 75 feet, and therefore we had to give them a variance, which we did, gosh, a long time ago. But this would allow those lots that are on a corner, where they have multiple streets running by their house, for the fence on the non-9/11 address to be five feet. So that's another change. We have a requirement of a two-car garage currently at all homes. Our ordinance says that we need to be able to park two cars in those garages. That's been changed to say that we need a two-car garage, but we're not going to require them, for those people. It's almost unenforceable. We'd have to go look at everybody's garage to see whether they're storing anything out there to keep a car, two cars we park in there. So they're going to build it, they're going to store whatever they're going to store, they're going to park wherever they're going to park, but they've got to start at least with a two-car garage. But we're not going to enforce... Yes, ma'am?
I live on the neon. We don't have garages all over the street. Do we have to build a two-car garage?
No, ma'am, those are grandfathered in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just new construction.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes?
I have a question along those lines. Is there any, and I apologize for not reading the ordinance a bit more carefully, is there anything that addresses keeping the garage closed, for instance? It is difficult sometimes when you drive down the street and you see three or four garage doors wide open, and they are using it for all practical purposes as a storage unit.
There's nothing that prevents them from doing that in our ordinances.
Ma'am, I have another question. So maybe they can...
Did it come back to you?
Yeah, it will. Yeah, it was. I'll come back to it later.
Those are the ones that were requested changed during this all-day meeting.
Parking in your front yard?
Yes.
Thank you. There's obviously people that park in their front yard, and I haven't seen an ordinance that actually restricts it, and I would think that this would be the one.
No, we do. They can do that for 48 hours. And what happens is the police will mark the car, and it does not move in 48 hours.
What about if it's done on a, you know, not necessarily concurrent, but every, yeah, every saw off the, you know, move it every 48 hours?
Sure. And we have people that do that.
Yeah.
It's a skirt, it's a skirt, the ordinance. It's, it surely wouldn't be, if there's some way that we could enforce another type of ordinance that would restrict them from doing it by saying you can only do it for two days for so many, a week or something.
Just not to say you can't.
But there would have to be some change in the ordinance for us to enforce that. And that's a good, I mean, we're working between Ms. Lutens, Mr. Bakken, and Ron Castle. We're trying to work on all the ordinances, so that would be a good one to bring up to them, and maybe they can come up with some programs that would allow us to do that. We have the same thing with boats, and we have the same thing, we allow the boat to come up in a driveway so they can repair it. But that's it, then they've got to move it. So driving around the city and bringing the bags, not moving it.
Well, the same with RVs?
Well, trailers. With trailers, we have the same problem.
Right, but I don't see that as often as some people parking in their front yard.
Well, we have one that's a constant every month, every week of every month, source of contention here in the city. I'm a trailer, and I'm working in the, we're working in the garage. And that's an every week, yeah. So it, we would like to, I personally would like to see something done. So those are the ordinances that we're considering here, and this is the public hearing on those. Is there any more comments on these ordinances before I close the public hearing? All right.
I've got it.
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
On your 20-foot setback of the structure, I'm still, y'all are going to set it to 22 foot? Is that what you're going to set it at?
Yes, sir.
But that's from, measuring from the side, the side of the house, basically, side of the house, to 20 foot from the center, or wherever the roof is, 22 foot on the height. And then from there, whatever height we have, then we're going to have to come back, or six inches from our setback? Is that what you're...
From that point that it goes over the 22 feet.
Whatever distance we have, if it's 24 foot or whatnot, then we'll be coming in our six inches from our side setbacks.
Not from the side setback, from that point where it went over the 22 feet.
But that's only on, that's on the existing house. If we're adding on to, and we don't reach our 22 foot, from the ordinance, from what I'm saying, y'all, the ordinance that you have right now, it's existing building, it's 22 foot or higher.
If it was, if you were doing an addition, like adding to the second floor?
No, not a second floor, just addition onto the side of the house, or the back of the house, anything like that.
It would have already had a hearing to allow that to have happened to start with, unless it was grandfathered in. So if it was recently new construction, they would have already had to go on before Board of Appeals Adjustment and got various... I don't know when the original...
Anything is not new, because it's basically old, because the ordinance has already passed. So basically, anything after the ordinance is...
That's correct. Anything after the ordinance. But remember now, it's where the point where it goes over 22 feet, that that has to be set back, the additional inches based on how high it is. Not the side of the house, unless it's straight up or whatever. And the others, any other comments? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and action, and recommendations, Board of Alderman, and possible changes, ordinance 18, as amended. Do aldermen have any additional questions to go over? Each one of these are individual. Number A is the addition of setback on structures over 20 feet. And I think that we should discuss and approve each one individually. So the first one is additional setback on structures over 20 feet. The change that's in the book states it's 22 feet, and it's from the point that goes over. On, in front of you, you should have the ordinance as it's written, that says, it is highlighted, that point which exceeds 22 feet in height.
Mr. Mayor, let me just point out that if some of these were to be approved and some not, if you vote on them individually, then there's some confusion about the ordinance.
Okay.
Certainly, you'd go through them individually, but then I would suggest either a motion to approve the ordinance as written, or with certain changes.
That's good. Okay, so the first one we're going to discuss, if there's any questions or any comments, is over 20 feet. No questions? The next one is the roof regulation. The change in that is changing, it'll be a 30-year warranty. Any discussion? Yes?
I'm going to expose my ignorance here.
Okay.
At the top of page two, the second full sentence refers to barn-type wood shakes or better will only be permitted. And I've never heard the term wood shake. And we're sure that that's not intended to say shingle. All right? See, I exposed my ignorance.
Only, I only know because my home had them.
They're wood shakes.
Any question on that? The next one is the fence and wall regulation, and there's a lot of different sections on that. Including the new section on the setback on the side yards.
That's the one I want to be clear on.
Okay.
Is basically for side, because I have a side yard, and I've thought about putting the fence. So on my side yard, it's five feet to the edge of the road.
That's correct. To...
Otherwise, I'd have to be knocking down trees.
It's actually to the edge, to the pin, so it's, right. So you've got the, yeah. And the last one is the enclosed garage, the two-car garage requirement is not changed, but the fact that we're not going to require them to be able to show us that they can park two cars in their garage is the change. All right, do I hear a motion to approve these changes in these, in ordinance 18, Article 4, Section 7, Article 4, Section 20, but as they're written in the book?
I move that we accept the changes noted for article number 18.
I'll start in a minute.
All in favor? Number eight, consideration, approval of resolution of Board of Alderman and Town Rancher VA, Texas Extended Provision to Section 33107 of the Property Tax Code, which enables the government body to assess an additional collection penalty. This is something we pass every year, that we can assess the penalty for those people who do pay their taxes, property taxes, untapped. And it's 15%. Your motion to approve that resolution?
I make a motion to approve the consideration and approval of resolution of Board of Alderman of the...
You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, consideration, action to designate an auditor for September 30, 2007. Historically, we've used Long Chilton out of Harlingen, and Quentin Anderson is the managing partner that does the audit here. I recommend that we stay with them, and do I hear a motion to approve that?
Make the motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I already did number 10, that's the remainder of the hurricane meeting on July the 19th, here at six o'clock. And I would beg the aldermen to be here if they possibly can, to answer any questions, and to see who may need help and so forth, if it is possible. It's not required, and it's not a function of being elected, but it would be nice if we could do that. Any other questions, any other comments? Do you hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, excuse me?
I just wanted to ask, is there a reason why we don't get the, kind of the police department recap on the monthly meetings like we used to?
Yes, ma'am.
I, okay.
There is.
Okay. I'll visit with you sometime, maybe?
No, I don't mind making it public, especially since it's not untapped. There was a lot of comments about being a police state, a police city, we're doing this, that, and the other, and that, the consensus was, of the people we discussed it with, which were the police and some of the aldermen, was that bringing up the fact that we're collecting warrants, and the warrants order was... we're collecting warrants and the warrant program is a good program, but it, it seems like by doing that, we're saying, "We're running the city based on police revenue." We're not doing that. We still put it out.
Well, that's not exactly what I'm referring to. I'm referring to the report that we can get that would kind of let us know, just generally speaking, the numbers of tickets issued, you know, where you had a crime, you know, where you had burglaries or those kinds of things, because I always found it kind of encouraging to know that compared to other places, we seem to remain relatively safe and, and if there was, like on so-and-so street, complaints of things being stolen from open garages or things missing out of the yard or car thefts, it kind of, I think it helps to make the public aware of what's going on in the community so you can be informed.
Sure.
Being informed is forearmed sometimes.
And the reporter still carries those same figures there. But if you remember, it didn't tell you what streets or anything else, it was just a recap of the number of citations that were issued, warrants issued.
Yeah, but I think it would give the streets.
It did give streets.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, and not everybody gets the, the reporter. Not everybody belongs to the, to underwater.
And that's a shame. That's a shame. They all do that. There's no reason that we can't leave that report out on the back table, just like we used to.
That'd be great. And if people are interested, they have it available.
Sure.
It doesn't have to take up time and it doesn't have to be...
And all, Jean would make their report and he sent the reports on the table and that was all it was set on.
Yeah.
The other one was on the warrants and I... Things need to be taken in their proper perspective and when they're taken out of perspective, they're sometimes glorified when they don't need to be. Yes, ma'am?
I personally am very proud of our police department here. I brag on them all the time with everyone.
Anyone else before we adjourn? Do you hear a motion to adjourn? Before we, before we, before we make that motion to adjourn, the Bizarro paving project, Combray Children's Project is probably, I thought it might start this week, but it may be early next week when it starts. But it's all been, we've gone through all the rigmaroles we have to go through and the contractor was up here this week sometime to go review what we're gonna have to do. And I don't, I, I, there are certain hedges that are grown in the right of it, they're gonna have to be handled. And I'm gonna try to be out of town when that happens. Some complaining about it, but there's two places on Bizarro and one of them, the house is for sale. You know who that is? And, and the hedge is that far from the road. You shouldn't have been allowed to be put that way anyway, but it is. So, but anyway, that project should start. And the other thing I forgot to mention is everybody, if you haven't noticed, the town park or the park, the city park, that, not the town park, city park, yeah, a park, a Childess Park is, is finally being, the dirt's being moved over there and we expect that to be installed in the next six weeks. We have to run it in six weeks.
I just have one more quick question before we adjourn. Is there any...
No, Sheriff wanted one too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, is, is there any further feedback in regards to the truck traffic here on the corner of Conman and on the frontage road? I know that...
Fortunately, they open 511, so we, that traffic's going away.
Okay.
Before, the trucks had to get off here in front of Rancho Viejo to get on 511 to go out. But it's open now, so that, that really eliminated that. Yes, ma'am?
The papers?
Oh, if everyone, anyone bought a paper. If you didn't buy a paper, you should have. But if you haven't, if you have, they're installed out there now by the bench on the, I guess it'd be the northwest, northeast side. But anyway, those papers have been installed, the engraved papers. Go look and see where you are, number one, and make sure your name is spelled right, number two. If they're not, we'll get those directed, just let the town hall know. But we have room for another few hundred, so if, if we can get some people to buy them, let's do it. All that money goes to landscaping and the maintenance of the landscaping here at the town hall. That's the only way that money's gonna be spent. Your motion for adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Second?